All right then. I'll need a resolution to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting closed. All right then. May I read the resolution and then we can proceed further? Or do we revisit the regular meeting instead? Well, seconded by Mr. Zant, everyone in favor that we come out of the closed meeting and let's read the resolution. Be resolved that Town Council accept the hiring of Mr. Stephane Guerignot as a full-time day operator and that he be subject to probationary period for six months. Be resolved that his salary be set at level one grilled three of unionized employees as recommended. Seconded by Councilor Sima, all those in favor. Carry then, thank you. All right then. Fine, so we will re-enter into a closed meeting that we just came out of at the end of the regular meeting. Any announcements, no announcements, that's fine then, let's go on. Does anyone in the audience have any question of, any questions of Town Council? This is your opportunity, your sole opportunity, to ask questions of Town Council. Members, none, fine then. Let's go on now to item 10.1 Consent Items. Any items you'd like to withdraw? Yes, Mr. Mayor? 10.1 sub B and 10.2 sub A. So 10.1 sub B and 10.3 also sub B, that's fine. Would somebody care to read those resolutions that we will consent to? 10.1 sub B, no, well, we have to read the resolutions that are on consent first. Yes. Be resolved with the following items, as identified under Consent Items, that appear on the agenda of the regular meeting of Town Council of the 17th of October 2016 be adopted. 10.1, the adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. Special meeting of the September 27th meeting 2016. Adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 3rd 2016. Also, receipt of the minutes of the following meeting. Public Transit Advisory Committee meeting minutes of May 12th 2016. Also, 10.3, adoption of the following recommendations from Committee of the Whole Meeting of October 3rd 2016. Resolution to authorize the submission of an application for the 2016 Clean Water and Wastewater Fund program. See resolution to authorize the payment of the 2015 audit invoice. 10.4, resolution to accept the resignation of a member of the Off-Leash Dog Park Committee. And 10.5, resolution to adopt the salaries paid. Seconded by Councilor Grimaire. Fine, carried. Let's go on now to 10.1 sub B. Councilor Lelant, yes, Mr. Mayor? With regards to the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 3rd 2016, I'd like to question one item included in the minutes that deal with bylaw 2016-96, a bylaw with regards to screens, private screens and fencing. I had occasion to speak to three bylaw enforcement officers and they tell me the following. Our bylaw states 1.5 meters from the fence for trees, or pre-existing trees. And it states nothing in this bylaw shall approve continued use of the fence, of a fence, if such fence was lawfully erected in conformity with the provisions of a previously adopted bylaw. And the other one, 11.2, states the following: Any exception approved under a previous fence bylaw continues to be enforced and shall be deemed to be issued under this bylaw for regulatory and enforcement purposes. Now, other people have told us that we haven't changed our position now. The beginning of the bylaw states that the previous bylaw has been rescinded. However, this particular bylaw states that it has not been rescinded. So if we receive complaints, shall we force these people to cut down their fences or to cut back those fences that they have? There's a grandfather clause stating that those pre-existing fences can continue to remain erected. However, however, I believe that this particular passage leads to a bit of confusion, does it not? Well, well. Maybe Mr. McCauley can answer as to that? Well, maybe I can't help you as to that, but I can clarify matters. We're in the process of adopting the adoption of the minutes of the last regular meeting of council, so it's not, now it's not the time to discuss any previous bylaws that have been voted upon. If you have any questions as to those, if you need to reconsider, for example, a matter of bylaws that have been enacted, you have to give directives to the staff to look into this and come back with a resolution to either rescind or revamp or review the pre-existing bylaw. I apologize, yes, that should be the course to follow. Well, the mistake, there was a bit of a mistake here. It states that, that there was a public library project that was implemented, but it purported rather to the cultural committee, cultural committee's dealings rather than the public library board's dealings. All right, we'll modify it accordingly. All those in favor, carry then. Let's go on now to 10.3 sub D. Yes, be resolved, the Town Council, Mr. Mayor? Otherwise, that the main waterway connections in rural areas that were pinpointed in the 2015 fund outlay, that it be considered, rather for the 2016 water main act, so that it may qualify for subsidies. What, Mr. Mayor, the reason that I'm asking this question is this, or that I'm raising this matter is this. I'm not against the request for grants in this respect. I spoke with the ministry representatives to that effect this afternoon, but the pipe, well, you see, the pipe will be laid in front of certain properties and will the property owners be charged back so many, so much per feet of pipe laid down in front of their properties? Well, the decision, it behooves Town Council to decide whether or not, whether or not we should charge back part of the costs or the entirety of the costs of this particular project to ratepayers. Well, Mr. Mayor, we do have bylaw 2010-163 that states clearly, states clearly that all individuals are called to pay certain amount for the footage of piping laid in front of them, laid in front of their property, should I say. Section 3.1, 3.2, as well as section 6.0 and 6.1 also bear this out. Well, we're talking about the connection of water mains in between Chenny, Bourgette and Clarence Creek. And does not cater, if it does not cater to the needs of the citizens, well, for example, if those citizens wish to connect to the water main, they can appear before council and ask them, ask that this be done, but we cannot invoice them for this particular work being performed because this water main is built to there or put in there, not for their needs, but for the needs of others. Well, you see, that was put in, it's put in to ensure safety for villages. Well, well, this is not a local improvement cost, Mr. Mayor. Really, this is an improvement brought to the system as a whole, as it stands right now. So that's why I don't believe that we have to resort to a public hearing with regard to this matter. It's for, this is being done to ensure a proper... Well, you see, water work charges are imposed upon all owners of land in the village for which they have frontage on the water distribution system. This is what the bylaw states quite clearly. This is a bylaw that was enacted. Now, if we rescind this bylaw, an individual, individuals that have entered into a 20-year agreement, will they find their, this particular agreement modified to a certain extent? Well, Mr. Mayor, as explained, this project is implemented for the benefit of all ratepayers. This, this particular project will improve the system as it now stands. If someone is not connected but will connect, they will pay capital costs that are involved like anyone else who would wish to connect himself or herself to our water main or to a water system. Now, this is not new, but the 2010 bylaw states this. We did receive grant money specifically to improve our water main to cater to the needs of those who wish to connect to our water main. It's, of course, it falls under the aegis of local improvement programs or projects. All ratepayers have been required to pay capital costs, the same as those that are actually connected to the water main. Well, I asked for registered vote because in effect, Mr. Mayor, this provision applies to everyone that wishes to connect to the water main. And then the question remains, will this practice be carried out throughout the city of Clarence and Rock and Rockland? Well, you see, will cater to the needs of Clarence and Rockland as well as Bourgette with two lines. When we consulted the ministers, we made it quite clear that it was for safety purposes. It was to ensure the health and safety of all ratepayers in those particular areas. If Councilor Lelant is convinced of this, we might as well table this for another two weeks unless there's an extreme deadline to be met with regard to this. Well, Mr. Kennedy, I believe that we need to come up with a decision with regard to this as soon as possible. Because we're being asked to come up with a plan proposal that is shovel-ready, right? Well, the CWF program is due as of October 30th, so we need to take a decision tonight with regard to our request for funds. Well, I'm not opposed to go forward with our request for funds. It's just, I'm just opposed in the, to the manner in which this is being put forward to members of the public, to our ratepayers. Well, financing is subject to the data called from future reports, the nature of the project that will be implemented, the financing that will be, that, that will be obtained. Well, there are million millions of dollars that are available in the province. I can't understand why we only obtained $730,000 from both a provincial and federal level. We obtained $2,175,000 at the time that Mr. Maranado was working for us and obtained grants for us. Mr. Kennedy, well, Mr. Mayor, we received a letter from the ministry and the maximum that we can apply for is approximately $732,000. This is a maximum that is capped by the province, Mr. Lelant. This is a maximum amount that we can ask for at present. So, seconded by Councilor André Lelant, that's fine. All those in favor? Well, I'm against. I vote against, I'm opposed. I've just asked that a registered vote be taken. Well, that's fine then. So, Mr. Grimaire, in favor? Mr. Zant, in favor? Councilor Lelant, opposed? Mr. Simonneau, in favor? Mr. Levert, in favor? Mrs. Sima, in favor? Everyone then, Mr. Levert, in favor? So am I. Fine then. All right, let's carry on. Did we have the, we're, we've reached item 11. Be resolved that the accounts pay for the period between the 10th of September up to the 7th of October 2016, the amount of $7,280,793 and 76 cents be adopted as carried. Seconded by Councilor Grimaire. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor? I do have a question. Go ahead, Councilor Lelant. Page two, Mr. Mayor. An amount of $2,000 due from employees. This is how it's labeled. It's a $2,000 amount that we had occasion to pay for employees? I'm not too sure as to that. Well, let me, Mr. Mayor, allow me to look into this and I'll get back to council with regard to this particular law item. I'm not sure what Councilor Lelant is referring to at this point. Also, page 11, Mr. Mayor, starting off with line item 10, Dillon Consultant Limited, professional services in the amount of $11,575. What exactly is this amount for? It starts off on page 10 down at the bottom and finishes up at the top of page 11. I see. Again, what's, what's this amount for exactly? Well, let me see. $11,575. Well, those are professional fees, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. This is for the fire service protection plan. It's for, for the which, over the fire protection, fire service protection plan. Oh, I see. Apologize, I'm sorry. Thank you for the clarification. Page 37 this time. Page 37. Water sewer, $148,124.32. Is this a 50-50 split with the United Counties? Because Champlain is a county road, of course. Mr. Mayor, yes, indeed, yes, this is the total amount, basically. Half of this shall be reimbursed by the United Counties of Prescott Russell. Once the project is overdone with, we invoice back for the amount owing. Yes, I believe that the, last year we'd missed, we were a bit late in applying for this. All right, engineering fees are also split 50-50, are they, with regards to this particular project? Yes, from, yes, from what I can ascertain, that's right, yes. Let's go on to another item now. Page 157. Oh, I'm sorry, page 57, page 57. I note that there are two expenditures with regard to the Clarence Creek Arena. One in the amount of $47,280 and the other one for $18,984. Now, with regards to those two expenditures, we missed out on grants given out for the 150th anniversary of our parish or 150th anniversary of Confederation. Now, of course, we've gone past the due date, the 15th of June, but we missed out on grants that would have alleviated monetary burden that's imposed by those two items. Let's go on now to page 22. Uh, let me see here. Oh, there was just a comment I wish to make. Another question that I have is an invoice from J.L. Richardson Associates. $11,645, does that relate to our temporary employee? I note that the, we have one employee that's gone off on maternity leave and we hired two, two individuals to replace that lady that's off now. We hired Mrs. La Victoire at the very last meeting and then we've just hired one quite recently. While the temporary employee that was hired was to replace the employee off on maternity leave, Mrs. La Victoire was hired to help out from an administrative standpoint, to help out those people working in that particular department. She'll help to convert all existing data into digital format, you see. I see, okay. The other expenditure that I'd like to question, well, no, my query has already been answered with regards to the McSweeney line item that I wish to, to raise, that's fine. I received, by the way, Mr. Boucher's email concerning the hydro invoices that we received. We paid $48,000 some odd dollars for hydro expenses last month. I went by Chenny last week and all lights were turned on in that area, that's in Chenny. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. In Chenny, all the lighting system is worked, is, is keyed into a, basically, well, or should I say, is connected to a T-type system. We do have a women's soccer league, well, we have activities with regards to a women's soccer league that's ongoing during the weekend. Well, all I can tell you, sir, is that I went by there and all lights were on when there were, when there was no one making use of facilities. Well, fine, we'll look into it and we'll get back to council concerning this. I'm gonna have two questions here, Mr. Mayor. The first one. The first question, it was with concern with a pipe connection that cost us $400 and some odd dollars and there was an item for the CR Quaymills, $128,000, $130,000 or $180,000. In any event, does, does this pertain to the entire contract on Laurier Street? In any event, before going any further, let me pinpoint the exact information that I need. I'll send you an email as to that, you can get back to me as to this then. Any other questions? Councilor Levert, yes. Page 18, Mr. Mayor. Exit sign not working. We had it repaired, $531. I hope we're not just talking about, you know, replacing a defective ball beer. No, no. Work was more extensive. Page 17 also. Purchase of work boots, $162.71 and two other pairs of work boots, $498, that amounts to a higher amount than the previous boots that were purchased. Well, I can answer as to, was that, were those boots purchased for the recreational department, recreation department? I know that there were boots that were more expensive than others, I know that. Anyways, the items are, appear on page 27. It doesn't state exactly what purpose these boots were purchased for, in any event, or what department they were purchased for. In any event, are we? Let me see here. Maybe a pair had steel toes as compared to another? I don't know. Well, could be also a difference in size, foot size also. Well, look, do we not have a certain allowance for boots? Well, let's say if someone wears a special orthopedic shoes, then the onus is upon us to purchase those special orthopedic shoes to, to meet the needs of individuals. Councilor Simonneau? An amount, yes, $9,300 for storm drainage? I believe that WSB was working on Moore Street. Moore Street, this expenditure is with, is with regard to Moore Street. I'm talking about the $9,223.93, where did this money go to? Because the way it's written, well, I believe, Mr. Mayor, let me see here. We were asked to come back to Town Council and make council members aware of the data stemming from additional tests that were performed. And I believe that has a bearing with those tests, but we'll get back to you on that. We'll look into that, we'll get back to Town Council with regard to that. All those in favor, carried then, that's fine. Let's go on now to next item on the agenda, the approval of council meeting calendar. Be resolved that the bylaw 2016-99, to abrogate bylaw, previous bylaws with regards to meeting calendars and be resolved that the 2017 council meeting calendar be approved as presented. Seconded by Councilor Lelant. Any questions? Well, firstly, it's just a comment, but I would certainly prefer the initial calendar than the revised one, really. It won't change much of anything. But it seems that the majority wins out in this regard. There are only three dates that were, that called upon change, that were changed. There's one month where upon will be required to attend, I believe, two meetings instead of one? Or where we had back-to-back meetings? You know, that allowed us to go through those long weekends where there's a legal holiday declared on a Monday. Yes, we, we talked about holding two Monday evening meetings, one week after another, or at least holding a meeting on a Wednesday instead of two Mondays, one after the other. You know, so I think that's the best way to go about it. So, in any event, I believe that's the best of solutions that we can come up with. So, all those in favor with regards to the revised council meeting calendar? Let's go on now, fine then, carried. Let's go on now to the bylaws, bylaw 12.1. Bylaws number 2016-36 to 2016-34 inclusively, should I say, to levy the cost of maintenance of municipal drains for the year 2015. Well, let's take a look at those four bylaws, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, ask council members if they are against any of the four bylaws proposed. No, fine. Let's go on now to the adoption of 12.1, bylaws number 2016-36 to 2016-44 inclusively, to levy the cost of maintenance of multiple municipal drains for the year 2015. Item 12.2 this time, bylaw number 2016-134, to authorize the award of a contract to complete the Cobb's Lake Municipal Drain bylaw revision. 12.3, bylaw number 2016-136, to award a contract for the Hammond Tennis Court Lighting System Installation Project. And bylaw number 2016-144, to authorize the signature of a land lease agreement with Kealan Farms Incorporated. Part of law 21, concession five in Bourgette. Seconded by Councilor Sima. All those in favor then? Carried. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to mention one thing with regard to those bylaws. Is it possible when I receive a list of bylaws, you know, I have to take a third look, especially when we have this report with regard to Cobb's Lake? Everything is upside down, I have to go from one page to another, to another, and to, on a rotational basis if I, it's the best way to express the problem as it now stands. Could it, could we adopt a much easier way of looking through documents that are presented to us in, in, in digital format? Well, you know. Well, we adopted this, of, of course, this particular system to save money and save paper. Well, I understand, I understand that. Look. I understand, I understand. But in any event, there's a bit of confusion with regards to those, especially with that data, you know, with regards to those paying out for, for cupboard fees, you know, we have Especially with, with that data, you know, with regards to those paying out for, for culvert fees, you know, we, we have, we have difficulties. Difficulty making heads or tails of the data with regard to that. Oh, by the way, Mr. Caddie, thank you for the map concerning municipal drainage or drainage systems right now. Thank you, quite clear. Let's go on after confirmatory bylaw. Be resolved that we adopt a bylaw two thousand and sixteen dash one forty-five, being confirmatory bylaw, confirmatory bylaw to adopt all bylaws that have been adopted during the regular meeting of Town Council of the seventeenth of October. Fine, adjourned at seven thirty-five. We'll take a ten-minute break and resume. Thank you.